Meeting is called to order, and this is the October eighteenth meeting of the Committee of the Whole on Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities. And the first thing is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover for the for the mover a mover for the agenda, please? So moved by Mr. Deschamps second.
Oh, second.
And Councilor Dillabon, thank you. All in favor? Any additions or? Not hearing none, all in favor? Terry, thank you. Number three, which is the disclosure of peculiary interest and the general nature thereof. Am I hearing any?
No, I mean, yeah.
Hearing none, thank you. Now, business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole minutes, which would be of September twentieth, and these minutes have already been approved at at the September council meeting, but do you have any business arising, questions or concerns?
Yeah. Just.
Yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Just on. There was a discussion about the canteen and that we'd be at fifty percent capacity. I just wanted to.
What major beyond?
Two of sixty. For the. Yeah, two of sixty.
Mm hmm.
It's page two, it's item six, six A, Spencerville Canteen. So just wandering through you to Mike, the fifty percent capacity, does that change?
To the chair to the, yes, it has, so we're at a hundred percent capacity in the spectator area.
So not, can I get, so no changes in the lobby, the lobby stays non-spectator, but.
That is correct.
So double vaccinated.
Yes.
And one other one, so when we were talking about this, the, I just wanted to know if there was a change to the twelve to eighteen year old age group as spectators, do they have to be double vax now?
As, yes.
Oh, spectators, as participants, do they still or no?
Um. Depends on what league they're in. Um, H L hockey, for my hockey, I believe the the the, remember it was seventh. Girls hockey is November the first, and the figure skaters have not had a date set by skating.
So my, I guess my, sorry, I got off track. My question was, we're back to one percent.
Yeah.
That's mine.
But, so. And I, we got the memo from Mr. Grant back to hundred percent. Then I hear on the weekend. But you have to maintain two meters separation. So are we doing that in the stands and spectators that stands?
Through the chairs, no, we are not. Everyone still has to have their mask on. Um, so then there's not the two meter separation is not required in the bleacher areas, but everyone has to have a mask. And that's the way it was even at fifty percent capacity, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
They didn't have to social distance, but they still all had to wear the masks and they have to be double vax.
Okay, I, and I didn't get a chance on Friday with the meeting with Dr. Stewart. You can confirm this discrepancy, but I will this Friday, but somebody else told me, it was a different venue completely than yours. Uh, you know what? I think it was a movie, uh, the movie House in Rockwell Cin- Cinemplex. I think that's where I heard it from. We're at full capacity, but you have to stay two meters apart. Wouldn't do me no sense to me, but anyway, I, I just wanted to see what.
Counselor Hunter?
Uh, with the change here to Michael. Why are we still not allowing anybody in the lobby? That full, full capacity, what's the reason for not letting spectators stay in the lobby?
Uh, through the mayor, or sorry, to the chair, to Counsel Hunter, um, it's the provinces said in the spectator areas. Is what is known in the policy. So that's why we are going just with the spectator area, which is the bleachers and I agree on as well as the walking track. It's possible, and it's just the bleachers.
Yeah, we show maintain, if you maintain six meter distance. You got mask on. You're allowed in any other place restricted.
It's possible, again, as I've indicated prior to, um, with other restrictions that we had, responsible with all the being in the lobby, and it's congested as it is. You have forty kids on a Saturday morning from eight till ten with forty parents or eighty parents bringing those kids in. The lobby is congested to begin with, and then we just try to clear them out so that we can let the next group of people, uh, prepare to come in. So there's not a lot of room there. Um, and in Cardinal, we've made it that it's just a bleacher area. Um, anywhere outside, uh, once you go to the lobby, so we're allowing them to stand against the glass area now. And upstairs in the bleachers, we're just not allowing them to stand in the lobby area right now.
Right, that's gonna change very shortly.
Yeah.
Quite possible.
Now, hearing anything else? Nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, we will, we'll move on to, uh, agenda item number five A. And that's our delegation from, uh, Mr. Simpson regarding the Lockmaster subdivision. And I believe there's, uh, something new, uh, to be spoken about tonight. Mr. Simpson, go ahead.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, at an earlier, uh, meeting, we have requested that the noise wall, um, in our draft plan of approval, they um, recommended a eight foot high wall to run along the north side of the property to block noise from the train tracks. We, our, our study from gradient wind, um, uh, removed that requirement. And we've spoken with Ministry of Environment and also C N, and both of them have indicated that they would be happy with a berm, no wall, but a planting of evergreen and coniferous trees along the north side of the berm. And so, um, I don't want to bore you tonight with a long presentation, but we've got twelve pages of reasons why we should plant, uh, evergreen trees rather than building, uh, a, a solid wall along there. The solid wall will eventually break down and create a maintenance issue for the municipality. It will attract graffiti, um, maybe not in Cardinal, but I have experienced it in, in other areas where, um, I ended up spending half my day every Saturday covering up graffiti, and I, I don't think that the municipality needs that additional burden. So what we're proposing is a noise barrier of trees. It's, uh, more appealing to both the residents and, uh, and visitors to Cardinal. It will block the view of the train tracks. It will block the noise. It will attract birds and bees and animals and in our, uh, natural area at the north end of the site. So I'll let you read the twelve pages at your own convenience, but I'll keep my presentation short. So thank you.
Um, yes, we have had the, uh, we had, have, we have had a chance to go over the briefing note, Mr. Simpson. So I'm just going to, uh, ask the, uh, members of the committee, uh, if they have any questions for you, and I'll start with Counselor Dillabon.
Not by me at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chair. No, no, Mr. Chair, do we have an, an action item or a, or a mechanism to action this?
We do not, not, not tonight.
Okay, how do we resolve this? Can we resolve this tonight?
Uh, I'll, I'll refer that to, uh, Mr. Grant or C A O. Procedure on that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if, uh, committee wishes to accept this, uh, alternative uh, as, as the condition, a direction can be provided and we can incorporate that in, uh, to the, uh, for the council meeting on the twenty fifth.
Do we need a motion tonight on it? We would then. Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead if you have anything else. Also, we can, we can proceed that way.
Okay, well, the only other thing I was wondering is, uh, there's no staff report to go with this. Was the staff wanting to make a report? This is dated October the fourteenth. What's the date of?
Eighteen.
Yeah, so there's only four days in between. So maybe was the staff looking for an opportunity to make a staff report, uh, either supporting this or refuting it? Uh, I mean, I don't want to jump ahead of the staff here, but if the, if the staff has no uh, concern with the, with the request, then I'd just like to get it resolved off the table.
Mr. Grant, do you have any word on, on staffing issues on, on the report?
Um, there's probably, there's probably a few minor things, but, uh, I think, uh, more importantly, at the, at the high level, if, if committee is uh, sort of supportive of this, uh, shift of, of, you know, of, of wall berm to sort of in earth berm, um, then it's, it, I would say it's relatively minor in nature.
That gives that answer to your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, more or less, yeah. Though one thing I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, I'll say this through the chair to, to, uh, to Mr. Simpson. So I've got this, it's called, on the top of it is entitled memorandum. And, and it doesn't say who the memorandum is to or who it's from. It says what it's about, which is read the Lockmasters subdivision draft plan approval, and it's got a date on it, but it doesn't indicate who it's to or who, who sent it to us. I, 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 I gather from the presentation that Mr. Simpson prepared it, but, uh, and submitted it, but if he's submitting it as an individual, it would have his name on it. If he's submitting it on behalf of Lock Meadows, uh, Lockmasters Meadows, it would have their letterhead on it. So I just, just point out, I mean, I can put two and two together here, but the proprietary areas are missing.
Mr. Mayor, there was a covering, uh, email and, and it would have indicated that we would, um, appreciate uh, the opportunity to present this to Committee of the Whole this evening. And so, um, I can Wendy or Rebecca would have that email from me regarding Edwardsford Developments and Lockmaster Meadows.
Okay. Alright, so let's find a way to resolve it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm just gonna finish with, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have some questions. Um, uh, first, and, and excuse me if, if this was included in, in the last, uh, package that we had at the CDC, because I don't remember seeing it, but, um, you mentioned that there's a Ministry of Environment letter and a C N, a C N letter um, that said that they didn't have a, a problem with the change from, uh, a soliding foot wall to, uh, what you're proposing tonight.
Uh, C N, yes, um, there's an email from C N. There, there's, um, a comment from, uh, a gentleman at, uh, Ministry of Environment, John, and I apologize, I'd forgotten his last name, and he indicated that, um, what we had asked for before, i.e. removal of the berm and the noise barrier with no substitution was not a, a way of mitigating the noise. And so, um, I did speak to him after that. I, I uh, sent him a copy of this, and I can provide that, and I will provide it to Mr. Grant if that's.
We don't have a letter from the M O E that, that says that that's okay.
Not at this point.
I thought I said, I thought you said you did.
I, I did speak to him on the phone, and I can confirm it in writing.
Um, so if you were to go to, to a grass berm, I'm on, uh, the document you provided, the International Research Journal of Engineering and Technology.
Yes.
On, on page seventeen of sixteen, and figure two shows, so it shows a dump truck. And it shows the way that planting is used to, to break the sound um, in the planning design, and it, it clearly still has a wall as well as, as the trees. So are you saying that that the, the land barrier will become, will become the wall part of that, but there will still be trees on either side?
Um, no, the trees will be on the north side of the berm. The south side of the berm becomes part of the parkland. It'll be a grassed, uh, um, parkland, uh, area. On the north side of the berm, it will be planted with, um, evergreens and coniferous. The objective is to get as close to the train tracks as possible, but because of the little, there's a a little ditch waterway that runs under the tracks and under the road, and so it cuts the corner. And so if, if you go back to, um, uh, page twelve, it, it shows, um, it, it shows that little waterway running across the corner of the site from the track to Shanley Road. And, and because of that, and because of our stormwater management pond, it's, it's difficult to get close to the tracks and, and do the planting back there. And that's why we've designed the berm to go around our park area. It will provide tobogganing and winter activities as well as summer park area. But on the north side of the berm, it will be planted, and the trees, um, will be spaced in such a way and, and double layered so that as they grow and grow taller, it will improve our noise barrier as, as the trees mature. So I won't be here to see it lightly, but there will be no noise.
Yeah.
Twenty years, whereas in the short term, it will be a mitigation factor.
Sure. Um.
Can I, a couple more?
Yes, go ahead. Okay, so, so correct me if, if I'm wrong, but the, the National Railway, the C N Railway is is elevated from ground level to begin with.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Um. Do you know offhand what the height that it actually, that it actually is to begin with?
I think the, uh, I think the sign on the bridge says fourteen feet perhaps.
So to, so to again, any noise dampening, you would have to begin at fourteen feet and then go up, correct?
Um, it's my understanding that, that, the train coming along the tracks forces the noise down as opposed to sending it off. I, I'm not an engineer. I can't really explain it.
I'm just going by the other drawing that's on, on the page that, that you provided again on that same figure of seventeen of sixty. Um, and, and just doing the opposite with it, like if, if the house was the railway.
I understand what you're saying, but, but the trees will be in the same height as the fence. And so as the trees fill in and mature, they will grow above the fenced area. And, and so by replacing the fence with trees of, of a similar height, we're doing basically the, the same thing.
Okay, and so can I just, two more, one more? Um, Mr. Simpson, you're, are you going to be the builder?
Probably not. We will, we will do, we'll be the developer and, and, um, as the developer, we will put in all the services and all of, we'll build the berm, we'll build the, the tree wall, we'll build this stormwater management pond, and we'll put in the surf water, um, through a contractor, not.
Correct, sure. So your intention is though to retain ownership of the subdivision?
Yes. But, but once we get to the point of building houses, the, the construction of the houses, we need, uh, Terry on builder. I'm not a Terry on builder, so it's quite likely that we will partner with one or we will sell lots to the builder. And under the terms of our agreement, we will um, enforce an agreement with the builder to include the same clauses as required and as indicated in the subdivision agreement.
Good for him.
Okay, Counselor Hunter?
Uh, I have a few questions. First, firstly, uh, precover and the location of, and the type of trees. There's, there, in, uh, part of this that you're planting over, over there is in, uh, an area of, near the creek and wetland, and there, have you, uh, went through certification, engineering, uh, and forestry to to talk about the tree plantation and the type of plants and, and that you're going to plant in there?
Um, we're, we're far enough away from the creek that, that they've indicated that we're they have no further comment on it because we're not close enough to the, the waterway to affect it.
And substituting, uh, trees through your fence. I, I can see that that, that works. I know I was worried. We had trees around our, our berm too. But we still have to main, main, okay, okay, extra height berm because the trees didn't take sound barrier for twenty years. We've been operating forty years now without a sound, sound barrier there, but if you're planning, which I assume you're planning on, on building houses in there before twenty years.
Yes.
You're not going to have any sound barrier there, that, 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 for the twenty years.
Well, um, the, we are providing the, the, the berm, which is two point five meters or eight feet high, and, uh, and the trees on top of that will be another eight feet. So we'll be up sixteen feet when um, and that's exactly the same as the fence.
But likewise, it, it is those trees aren't going to be, unless you're planting eight foot tall trees to start with. You're not, you're just planting, planting seemingly trees along, along there. You're gonna, on top of a berm, you're gonna have a thirty, four, forty percent vitality rate on, on those trees and top that berm that you're gonna have to replace, so.
Well, within, within, within three, um, three or four years, the, the trees will fill out. Like, evergreen Christmas trees grow, uh, very quickly. Certain types of evergreens, um, they'll, I think this summer, some of our evergreens have gained two, two and a half feet. It won't take long. It won't take long. But we probably will not be building phase two anytime soon unless you see, uh, something about if our housing market continues, then you, I hope you're correct, but if it doesn't, the, the ones along the north edge will probably be the last ones could build.
Might be fine with the trees going in there, there as long as they're, that they're not season trees. You're gonna have to plant something more, more than season trees. You're gonna have to plant at least two foot tree stock.
Yes.
Along, along there because other than that, you're, you're done, you're not going to get one. Again, I didn't work in forestry all my life, so. Christmas trees take, take, take a minimum of fourteen years before you sell a Christmas tree.
If it were to conflict of interest, I'd hire you as a consultant.
But, uh, as long as you're planting button.
I think two foot.
Button. Something, something in the name of a white spruce or your plant, they probably seed your is the quickest growth, growth one. If you have a combination mixture or something in there, then go and put in three foot trees to start, if I can. I'd go along with, but if you just.
Yeah, I think, I think a two foot.
Seeding star.
I think a two foot, I think a two foot to start is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Packwood. No questions at this time. And Mr. Bush? Okay, uh.
One more.
Go ahead.
Um, we have, uh, an approved, so this is a request to change and, and relieve the obligation to build the fence and replace it with, um, with the trees.
Correct.
So in the twenty thirteen draft plan, the requirement is, is the fence. Yeah, okay.
Okay, just one time, one time, oh. You're hearing, hearing, go ahead.
No, just looking to how to resolve it. Bring something to council to resolve this.
So, uh, Rebecca or Mr. Grant, uh, do we, uh, do we still need a motion to bring this forward?
Well, if, if, if committee's, uh, interested in replacing the, uh, condition that speaks to the five meter wall with a, uh, earth berm and, uh, evergreens on top, uh, if we had, if, if we had that, uh, uh, consensus on that, then we would bring something to, uh, to, to council to indicate the, uh, condition change.
Okay, uh, just looking around the table, I'm, I'm sensing that what, uh, Mr. Simpson has proposed is, is suitable. Uh, any, any adverse to that?
Not for me. I'd prefer to leave it as the twenty thirteen recommendations.
Okay, the majority, the majority is in consensus with, uh, with, with Mr. Simpson. So is that enough to bring forward?
So what we, what we will do is bring an action item, uh, to, uh, to, to council.
Fine, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Simpson. Appreciate, appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Good night. Good night now. Okay, that brings us to our, our next discussion, uh, or to number six, our discussion items, which is the Spencerville Winter Sidewalk Maintenance Tender, and this is the one that was brought forward to, I believe, it was the last council meeting and did not, uh, get a, a mover or a second for it. So it's back in front of us tonight. The briefing note, uh, is attached, and you've got a chance to go over it. Uh, there is no recommendation here, uh, so it is just a discussion item. So, uh, any questions or concerns? And I'll start with, uh, with our end, Mr. Red Bush.
Um, just the last alternative option is to, to buy a trailer or some type of equipment to move our plow from Cardinal to Spencerville. What is, uh, our plow that runs in Cardinal? I'm, I'm not familiar with it. Is it very busy? Like, is it, uh, when we have a storm, how long does it take to clear all the sidewalks?
Well, um, I'll let, I'll let staff answer that, uh, if, if you would, please. I don't know who wants to answer that, whether it be Mr. Shaw.
So one of the Director of Operations respond to that?
Thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. Bush. Um, so basically, according to regulations, we've got forty-eight hours to clear sidewalks. Um, typically stunned by our time employee, so, um, could be under operators, of course, the first priority of the boat. Um, so there, as, there's a small note at the bottom, um, that altered options may result in adoption of service level due to personnel limitations and for uncertain, uh, this time, but, uh, you can see, uh, some, some problems with.
Okay, with that, okay, alright, thank you. That's it for now.
Okay, Mr. Packwood.
Um, I do have a question. Um. If council decided they were gonna buy a sidewalk machine and keep it here in Spencerville, where would we set? Is there a place to keep? And then the other question is, where would you keep the sand and salt on the sidelines? Those are the questions I have right now.
Alright, now we all refer your questions to staff, and, uh, Mr. Shaw, if you could, uh, if you had some input in that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, so basically in the past, um, contract has, has, uh, purchased a C container, and it was kept beside S P S one, um, at the gas station there in town, and, uh, we had, uh, got some hydro, and so then you could flood the block heater in, salt and sand, um, according to the, um, the tender, um, could be purchased from us or on their own, so we, we could possibly supply with the sand and the salt.
Counselor Hunter?
Well, I guess I had, uh, tender, we've brought, made it last time, but I didn't sign it up. I don't have a, have a problem with contract. No, I don't have a problem with having an early put, you know, doing it either, but, uh, when we see a forty-nine percent increase over the tender, previous tender and the want for for the sign on for a three year contract, I have a problem with that. I know inflation went up, and I don't feel one. And inflation went up and old fuel itself moved up, but I didn't think it went up pretty near fifty percent. And this is just an estimate. This is just estimated that. It's not going to be any, anymore. This is a. Is from what I can look at, this is figured out, uh, at a forty-nine percent in, increase. Uh, on the, on the per episode and hourly rate. This isn't figured, this isn't. And it's going to be just forty-nine percent more than what it was last year. If we have a. A major winter, but you're forecasting, this could be a hundred percent. More than what it was, was last year. This is a, a total rate increase of forty-nine percent, not just a. Uh, overall budget increase of forty-nine percent, so. Or we can re-tender it and see if anybody else gets interested in it. I don't know, but, uh. The rate we're talking here. I think for a long rate plan, we'd be further off to have our own equipment and be doing it. Because it, this looks like it's going to be a, a continuous thing, I think. Just provision on my own, I. We only had one tender in last year, so they thought this, this guy's not tendered. Maybe he made it quite public. He wasn't going to tender this time, so. I think this out, well, when he went tender, we can put whatever price we want on here. I think we're. We might better bite the crunch and, and buy a piece of equipment and.
Deputy Mayor.
I echo pretty much exactly what, uh, councillor Hunter said and, uh, the alternative options. So I think I'd like to, uh, you know, reject the tender and then, and then reissue with that as a possibility. But at the same time, I'd like to investigate that feasibility there. Leasing a sidewalk.
Leasing or buying?
Well, both.
Deputy, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
So, I, I. Missing from the alternative options is re-tendering, you know? I, I kind of like the idea of. Rejecting the tender that we've gotten and re-tendering. I have real serious problems with adding another piece of equipment and another, uh, employee. Every piece of equipment that we add goes into our asset management plan. And every, and our asset management plan requires that we set cash aside in the amount of the amortization. We're not doing that now for what assets that we have. As we keep adding assets. The, the requirement of our asset management plan just becomes more and more and more owners all the way along. If I had my way, we'd get rid of every piece of equipment that we have that's depreciating every single day. And we tender or contract more of our services. So I, I have a real problem with adding, and adding assets. And I would prefer that this just be reject the tender that we've got, re-tender it, and there's another possibility, and that's re-tender it. With a, with a firm price. The township is offering a contract at this rate. You know, and, and requiring these conditions. So we're offering a contract at this rate, with these conditions. Sidewalks have to be cleared within a certain amount of time. Name the sidewalks, uh, to be maintained. We supply the salt and the sand, see who comes forward to take up that kind of an offer. I think, I think councillor Hunter is right. Uh, somebody had the idea that the last year's. Uh, contractor wasn't going to be, um, speaker and they took advantage of the fact that they thought it would be a. A wide open, uh, a wide open opportunity, and that's why we're seeing the injuries.
Counselor Dylan.
Uh, I'm, I'm, uh. The exact opposite. I think we should look and investigate. To lease or to buy and, and to put a matter for a part-time person. Personal contractor, because we can't, as you see here. Uh, alternative options may result in reduction of service level due to personnel limitations, so. We don't have the personnel, so let's put. Uh, we tried the greater part of leasing. I know what Mr. Mayor is saying, uh, you know, let's get more and more work out there. But we tried that and we ended up with zero people interested or couldn't come through with it. So I'm not sure if you're gonna, you know, your tender, you can re-tender it, but I think you're gonna be very, very surprised at what you get. Coming back at you. And I mean, we got winter coming on. So we gotta, I mean, and first of all, I don't even think you're, probably have enough time trying to get a, that piece of equipment for. November, December. So we're gonna have to be trucking back and forth, of course, compared to Spencicle until we do. But I would, I would be putting a part-time. Adding in the paper. For snow, we're moving on sidewalks in the, in the town of Spencicle. On call only.
So, uh, you, you would like to see this re-tendered?
Well, you can if you like, but I, I think you may get the same results. I, I, I really lean towards investigating and purchasing or leasing. And getting a part-time person on call leases.
Okay, I need, uh. I need some help from around the table here. Looking, looking to purchasing our own equipment and, uh, and operator. And or re-tendering the, uh, the entire, uh. The entire quote.
I know a lot of scroungers, nobody. We could re-tender, but I think we're gonna get the same. Results, price may come down, down a bit, because they might figure somebody else might tend to, but. Most of the ones I think now that are, that's used sidewalks. It's often all, already sent their equipment to whatever jobs and stuff they, they already contracted. Far as getting equipment, I don't think it's any trouble. Be releasing or, or purchasing, uh, the equipment. Basically what they've been using in Spencicle, here, here is a compact tractor that they've been using. Every firm dealership had all kinds of things set on the lot right now. Well, we have, have Cardinal we bought second, secondhand and they, they, it was, I know the city of Ottawa changes. Number of them every, every year and in city of Cardinal will changes them every couple of years. There's probably at this time of the year, they delivered brand new ones. There's probably all kinds of good. Used two, three year old sidewalk that was sitting looking to be leased or rented. We started buying one, maybe we lease one for a year and see how, how it works out, so. Where you can put it in inventory, you just have a good part-time man and see how it works.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you follow?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. No, I, I, I won't go along with that. I don't, I don't understand why people don't understand how an asset management plan works. Lease is a different thing. Lease for three, four, five months, that's a different thing. Goes back to the owner at the end of the, at the end of the winter, but. And, and I don't think we're under any pressure here either. Because I'll tell you, right now, we've got a piece of equipment in Cardinal that, that works on a, I think we, we allowed, uh. I can't remember how many hours a week for that snowplow operator in Cardinal. Can't remember whether it was twenty-six, something like that. Hours per week. And so worse comes to worst, that machine in Cardinal can be brought here in two or three hours. And the operator can come with it. We can extend his hours, but. And it can go back to Cardinal when it's finished. If worse comes to worst, we're not under any pressure here. So let's find a way to, let's find a way to re-tender this. Think about the taxpayer. The taxpayer is paying us as part-time person. It's another, it's another salary.
Okay, uh, so I have a question for staff regarding, uh, bringing the, uh. Cardinal snowplow to Spencicle. We do have the equipment to bring that here, I do believe. I guess that's a question for staff.
Uh, I, I, I believe that the trailer that is in existence has the, uh. Capability to, uh, transport that. That's, I think is something that needs to be confirmed.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any further, any further comments? I'll go to councillor Hunter.
We didn't get a jack. Hours was asked, how many hours does a cake plow the streets in Cardinal? One trip around.
I, well, I, I, I would, I, I would, I would, uh, estimate you're probably looking at, uh. Like, uh, four, four to five hour run.
Those. We do a four to five hour run in Cardinal. There'll be a min, minimum of an hour loading and transport the thing up there, that's six hours. So who's making the decision? Which town's going to get the sidewalks plugged first? Like, one town's gonna get plugged, the, one, the other town's not gonna get the plug until that night.
That doesn't happen now. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Doesn't happen now anyway. Sidewalks here are never done with, in the first day or so after that. Well, maybe they are, but I'm, I'm, I've never seen it, but.
I know generally the sidewalks here are gone. Or last winter, anyway, I remember. My sister quite often learned at seven o'clock in the house and it's snow during the night, so I'm glad.
There were plow. Well, then let's, then let's tender it again. Ten day tender, oh, fourteen day tender, oh.
Counselor Dylan, go ahead.
Uh, yes, just some for the CEO. We got four, four hours in Cardinal, home, an hour traveling five. How many hours is it gonna be to do our, our sidewalks here?
I, 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 I would, I would probably estimate. Uh, hour to, in between one hour, two hours.
Two hours?
I, 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 to be safe, I would say two hours.
So it's a seven hour day? Eight hours.
Eight, eight hours, yeah.
Yes, and it was like this one. Naturally, that depends on what the snowfall is.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Right, like.
One more. Could it be done that way? Uh, do you second Mr. CEO or, or to our operating manager? That we could. Use one from Cardinal and do both Cardinal Spencicle with the same amount of manpower that we have now?
Through here, I, I, I would say that it may be difficult because the, the key is, uh. Keeping the part-time employee, uh, to a maximum of twenty-four hours. And you start exceeding that, then you, um, you get into potential, uh, union contract issues.
So you may have to look at a second, a second part-time.
Potentially.
Well, I'm, 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 go ahead, Mr. Packwood.
I think it'd be prudent in our part to lease a machine for this year and get another. Part-timer and see how it goes for one year. Just look at Kels. And you're doing something that really have a basis to work with.
For next year.
For next year.
But if someone's gonna come in for two hours too. That's your trouble. For us.
Well, it was tendered, had somebody lined up that was going to create an on-call plow store.
There isn't a recommendation.
No, there isn't.
And I believe that the last time we saw this, the recommendation was. Was there a recommendation that was it to accept?
Through, through, through the chair, the, the recommendation was to accept.
And, okay, go ahead and ask again. So would that recommendation still, uh, stand, Dave, or? I mean, I know it says options for the contract and alternative options, uh, those is, like, if you. I mean, you've heard the discussion and the will around here. It seems a little divided. Where, where are you? Are you still at a word in contract the way that it was?
Uh, I would, I would certainly say, uh, just based on the, uh. Time, time of year that we're, that, that, that we're at, we're, we're coming into a bit of a, um, a crunch, but, um. If, uh, if there's interest in certainly rejecting the tender, uh, re-tendering. But what I would certainly say is that we want to sort of run Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C altogether. So that we're not, um, if, uh, if, if we don't get anybody that, uh. Responds to the tender and, and, you know, in a, in a reasonable, uh. Cost that we already have, you know, we've already confirmed and checked out that, uh. Transport, uh, on temporary from, from Cardinal to Spencicle, understanding that, um. As, as members of council, you're probably going to hear some feedback depending on the amount of storm and, uh, you know. So, somebody's not going to have the same level of service dur, during storms. And we'll, we'll also look at the, the option with respect to, to, to lease and purchase and.
Okay, just one comment on, on something that was said earlier, and I just wanted to, uh. Uh, say, especially if we're, we're gonna reject and, and re-tender. Um, the mayor made a comment on, on stipulating what, what the price would be, and I, I like that idea. You know, as to setting what, what our expectation of the price to come back is, instead of just asking people to submit a price. But, but instead saying, here is the price and this is the level of service we want. I like that idea, so.
Okay. Well, I think it'll be, and especially if you add to that, to the chair for me, if you add to that, you know, first, first, uh. First responder gets it. My feeling is we'll get something over with, but I don't know. What worries me is the degree to which these, uh, tenders, uh, go out and get, uh, circulated. Putting stuff on our website is not an answer. That is not an answer. I don't know what else we do with tenders. On our procurement policy, but it's a question of putting stuff on our website. That's not my idea of circulating a tender. So through the chair, maybe we get some, maybe we get some clarification on what mechanisms do we use to get these tenders circulated? In the industry and in the marketplace.
Staff?
Certainly through, through, through the chair, we use a combination of methods by, uh. Uh, invitation, you know, one, one of the mechanisms is through, you know, our, our website. Um, on, depending on the, uh, depending on the tender, and they go on in, into the local paper.
So there's more, there, there's more methods used than just, just.
Than typically solely, solely on the website.
Okay, okay. Well, I think, I think we have a consensus around the table that we want to re-tender. Uh, as quickly as possible. And, uh, could, uh, would it be possible for staff to have some information regarding lease? Uh, leasing options, uh, for, uh. Next Monday night's meeting?
We'll, we'll get moving on this as quickly as we can. Um. I would sort of recommend, uh, in, in, in reality, instead of going through that full-blown, uh. Tender process, that we would be better to go for requests for quotations, try to, try to get that out and, and, and get it back. Um, sooner than later.
Yeah. Okay, so I think you have your direction?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on. And that brings us to the. Six B, which is, uh.
Six B, which is remembering the children's ceremony, um, and, uh. Last week, uh, Counselor Hunter and myself attended this, this ceremony, and, uh, it was, uh, it was quite a. In most parts, it was quite a moving, uh, a moving experience, and, uh, Counselor Hunter, would you, uh, just mind highlighting, uh, some of the, uh, some of the, uh. Things going on at, uh, at la- last week's ceremony?
I guess the most interesting thing was, for me, Counselor, Cameron will see you, you down your hands and knees planting trees.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Counselor. Now the entire world knows.
It was a very interesting ceremony, the first time I'd had the opportunity to be at it, I've been, uh, uh. Over the years, I've attended a number of other, uh, ceremonies being conducted by the First Nations, mainly the Mohawks from Akasas, maybe this was, uh. Was, uh, a go and. And Mohawk combined along with, uh, Seven Nation and other partners, forestry and, and, uh. Different, uh. Municipal partners and stuff that were involved, involved in it, I think, which, uh. What they named, seven different partners, I think they had.
Yes.
Involved in it, and, uh. It was, there was a quite an open ceremony, all conducted in native language, uh. And, uh. Was, uh. Lot of emphasis put on, uh, on, as we're all aware, the past findings recently and, uh. The will for reconciliation and, uh. Very good, uh, speeches given by, uh, some of the First Nation leaders, as well as, uh, other. Uh, visitors and guests that were, were there, uh. MPP wasn't able to be there, but he had his, his, one of his new clerks was there representing him. I don't think there was a representative from the MP's office, well, was there?
No, there's no, no, John, there wasn't, uh, but, uh, but I'd just like to jump in here and add that, uh. Uh, Counselor Hunter is being, uh, being very, very, very kind, uh, because, uh, he brought, uh, brought wishes from the township, and he did an extremely fine. Fine job, uh, doing that as well, and, uh, it was, uh, it was quite, uh, it was, it was quite the ceremony, um.
No, I had, uh. Quite a discussion with a couple of different of the leaders that were, were there, uh. The one question I did ask, uh, the one young lady that was from, uh. Up in Western Ontario that happened down here with her business, she was representing in Ottawa and coming to the ceremony. Was, uh, what their, uh. I guess, uh, anticipation of October thirtieth. Being, September thirtieth, being recognized as, uh. True reconciliation day, what, she put her wishes first, and what she thought townships and stuff should have did. Or, and I mentioned to her that I knew some of the townships that had ceremonies, they hadn't declared it a holiday, but they had ceremonies and presented. Took time to represent them. Someplace within the township, or others like ourselves, and, and sent them to us, and Starmont, Lenderian, and that. You know, counties and stuff were recognized as a holiday, and actually give her, her employees a day off, and, uh. There were a lot of one other ones, there were, were quite. They didn't really think, just taking an hour or two, uh, two and walking down and making a few speeches, and then going back to work. Had the same weight of recognition, and actually recognizing it as a, as a holiday, as a federal government, and, and she was quite. I said, well, we recognize it, and she was quite thankful, and thank you very much, and. Standing wishes back to council, and she was glad to see that the council in this area. Had, had recognized it as a holiday, so I was quite pleased to, to hear that, and, uh. She had some strong opinions about some things that maybe we didn't all agree, agree on, but, uh. Oh, Cameron, as the pattern, we can all be. A little political sometimes, but, uh, we all have our own, own views, and that's fine, I accept, accept that, so, uh. But, uh, it was a very moving ceremony, like. Some of the chiefs that were there from a different groups were. Very serious about it, very, very. Not condensation sending or anything about it, they had their. Wanted to move forward, they, uh. Give great recognition to South Nation for the work that they were doing, working with the reconciliation with the First Nations. And, and the development of the healing center. And they're very interested in getting the history of it, uh. One of our committee members from, uh, Mr. Dave Robinson, he brought them a whole box full of history that his wife and him had collected over the years to. Help with their history, but. What had taken place over the years in, in Edinburgh, in that particular area that Seven Nation now owns, have dedicated. To them, so, uh. We're expecting to hear more about, probably the next. Year when they have it again, and I'd like to be more Seven Nations working on it, with some of the indigenous leaders to bring the history forward in there, it was brought forward. Being that that was the high spot, and it one of the highest elevation in Edinburgh Cardinal, that this was probably one of, has been one of the places that. And the one leader said, we dug down a couple of feet, we still like to find, find the campfire sites of where. They'd been because it was close to the river, it was the high spot, so that would have been a gathering spot for the. For the, well, went to gather on, and they're hunting and fishing and stuff, so, uh. It was very interesting, uh, well worth anybody's time to go to it, so, uh. I think there was sixty-five to seventy people.
Yes, yeah, close to that, yeah, yeah. And, uh, and, and again, uh, I certainly am planning to be there next year, and perhaps many years after that, uh. So with that being said, uh, any questions for, for?
Well, I just hope that one of you gentlemen remembered to bring regrets from the mayor, as you know, I was meeting with Paula Dill at that. Exact time, so that's why I was in there.
Rhonda, Rhonda, yes, Rhonda made, uh, made certain that it was from the mayor.
Thank you.
Comments from the mayor, so. Okay, thank you, John, uh, so we're going to move on now, and that brings us to the action information items, and, uh, so seven A is the, uh, third quarter fire report, and, uh. Uh, Chief Moore, would you, uh, like to highlight your report for us, please?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. We finished the third quarter with fifty-six calls. Uh, the fire, fire losses are listed underneath, the most significant being the camper trailer at, uh. Grenville Park, which I believe a couple of our committee members were, were present for. Under updates, uh, myself and another captain have been approved by the Fire College as a drunk instructors. Uh, so we will be able to teach, uh, the, uh, NFPA one thousand and two pump operations course moving forward. Uh, and I have another captain that is in the approval process for, uh, NFPA, uh, one thousand and one firefighter two. Uh, under meetings, we had our first association meeting since March of twenty twenty. Uh, training courses attended. Fire firefighters attended, uh, Lees and Thousand Islands Training Center to complete NFPA thousand and two pump operations course. That is the same course that Captain Bruce and myself shadowed in Co- Co-Talk. Uh, fire prevention activity, seven area businesses in the industrial park have been inspected. Uh, under activity, annual pump testing was completed, uh, follow-up repairs were scheduled on October thirteenth, but due to the fire here in Spencerville, they had to be canceled, so they're still outstanding. And the burn permits, registered burns for the quarter, just under two thousand at one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, there's a graph with the daily permit activations, you can see all the peaks, uh, indicating weekends. So we average anywhere between thirty and seventy registered fires, uh, each day during the weekend. And last but not least, under personnel, on the last page, uh, at the bottom, I received two resignations during the quarter, one from firefighter Dan Conley. And the other from firefighter and former fire chief Ralph Dukel.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chief Moore, um, if I may just ask one quick question before we, uh. Go around the table on your, on your last page under the roster, I see beside several wings, there's an R. Am I correct in assuming that that is retired? Or is there another designation for the R?
Mr. Chair, those are, are for recruits, so those are the latest firefighters that started at the beginning of this year.
Thank you so much, quite a difference between retirement. Thank you, uh, okay, any, uh, any questions on Chief Moore's report, and I'll start with, uh, the far end with, uh, Councilor Dillawatt?
Uh, nothing to report on, a good report, uh, chief, um, I see we're almost neck and neck from the third quarter last year to this year, fifty-six to fifty-one, so. Um, and I also noticed that, uh. On station two. We're still having problems, or not problems, but we still need some people there, is that right?
Through the chair, I think that's a fair statement, if, uh, we were hiring other folks at station two and get that balance up a little more.
Thank you, that's it for me.
So, thank you, so through the chair to the chief, um, any special recognitions, uh, from council? Due to either, uh, firefighter Conway or former chief Dukel? And I don't know when these, when retirements take place, do we present them with certificates or scrolls or anything? Or does that take place when we do the normal? Recognition?
Through the chair, my, my hope is to get our recent retirees at the, uh, at the presentation for our annual awards and present something to them that night.
Okay, that's the first question, um, through the chair, if I may, so then on page twenty-eight is sixty. Still sixty-three new, eighty-three new permits issued during the quarter. So the people are not all buying their permits right at the beginning of the year, these are permits that are actually purchased during the third quarter, is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Interesting. And now what is the, uh, the registered burns I see as two thousand, the, 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 uh. The statistic that's total users, is that the total number of permits that we've now issued, seventeen, eighteen?
Uh, through the chair, I believe the total users would be the total, uh, number of people registered with an account in the system.
Registered with an account in the system. Okay, I understand, yeah. And now, if I can, Mr. Chairman, uh, so just going back to the long list of, um, uh, on page twenty-seven. Uh, so first of all, I just want to recognize the, uh, participation in the touch of truck event. At the Spencerville Annual Fair, I, I did hear some good reports about that. Wanted to extend thanks to your, uh, volunteers that, uh, made that event possible. Uh, now going to the training courses, uh, is this what you would call normal, uh, training activity for the quarter?
Uh, through the chair, I would say for, uh, the pandemic, yes, we're still, we're, we're still kind of, uh. Limiting our numbers and trying to keep smaller groups, uh, just smaller groups, so I would say this would be less than what we would anticipate, but normal for the last twenty months or so, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Hunter?
Uh, just one question, here you can, uh, chief, uh. On your curiosity. The fire we had, had in Spencerville, here was a, a morning fire. We got twenty-eight. And was registered in Spencerville here, not fire call, early morning fire call, how many firefighters did we have respond to that?
Through the chair, in total, through the duration of the event, I think it was about three hours?
Yeah.
Just, I guess, off the top of my head, I would, I would say we had a dozen to fourteen.
So we're still, even though we have twenty-eight vendors there, we're still. Having a hard time from response during the week.
Absolutely, we struggled during the day, during the week.
Another question for that, I noticed in, uh, on the report that we had, uh. Backup from both Augusta and York Grenville for that fire. Was that, uh. Required for that fire to have anchors for that short of a shuttle to come in, or was that because we still had one? I believe we still have one tanker that's got maintenance done on it.
Through the chair, um, the first, the first tanker was automatic from, from Augusta because it was a structured fire, so, so the Augusta tanker was automatically dispatched at the same time we were. Uh, the call for an additional tanker from North Grenville was, I think, just based on the conditions on arrival, when, when the crews, uh, first, the first arrived. They thought, uh, that we might need some more water, but with the, uh, efficient placement of, uh, water, they, they knocked it down rather quick. Turns out, we did not need, uh, water from North Grenville, I actually don't think we, yeah, took water from either one of them.
I just wondered, just curiosity, whether anything else I knew, that knew that being in Spencerville, you still draw up, have the hook up at the millway, you still, that's why, huh?
Mr. Packwood?
Um, just a good report, this is for me.
And Mr. Bush? Nothing, okay, uh, thank you, uh, fine, fine report, uh. Oh, yes, fine, fine report, Chief Moore, and Counselor Dillawatt?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to touch on one thing there, it sounds a hundred, uh. To, uh, to the chair to the chief, uh, so if, if we have, if Augusta has a structure fire, do we automatically send a pumper? Or a tanker?
Through the chair, that's correct, it's a reciprocal agreement, that is correct.
Now, is that just Augusta, is that, uh, town of Prescott, no? This is just a.
Through the chair, that's, that, that agreement is just with the guy.
And who made that agreement?
Counselor, Counselor did.
Okay, to allow the one tanker, thank you.
Okay.
Just, just.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I know it's not in this quarter, uh, but the recent fire in Spencerville, do you have any kind of estimated damage?
Through the chair, I, I would just, I would guess it's probably going to be, uh, over, over a hundred thousand, three hundred, two hundred thousand dollars.
You did a good job, I was sure yesterday, you did a good job to, to get up there in that attic, to knock it down that quick, I'll tell you. They deserve, uh, big time credit for that.
Get up there.
Through the chair, that was, that was convenient.
I don't think it would have been easy.
Okay, um, thank you, and we're going to move on to seventy, which is the third quarter facility maintenance report, and, uh, Mr. Spencer, would you highlight your report, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, this is the third quarter report. July, August, and September, just, uh. Given a brief outline of some of the work orders that, uh, have been. Worked on through the three months. At the Agriyon lift inspection, uh, CO sensor calibration inspections were done, uh, just indicating some minor. Electrical issues with a couple, uh, ballots having to be replaced, uh, and also, uh, we had, uh, some sensors in some of our shower buttons, uh, had to be replaced. Spencerville, just indicating about the backup sewer issue. Um, upgrading at the, uh. Wiring here at the municipal office is an ongoing issue, this is to do with the. Um, the main walls of the old structure, which is replacing some of the old agent wiring, and, uh, it's not a point, uh, project.
I must say, I was quite, uh, quite surprised to learn that we still have, uh, and do the wiring, I'm quite surprised to be back.
Okay.
Well, um, in the parks, I just indicated that I typically don't, uh, list it, but I just show the. The cost of the township flowers and where they went, whether they're the hanging baskets or the, the baskets here in Spencerville. the cost of the township flowers and where they went, whether they're the hanging baskets or the baskets here in Spencerville. Page two is basically the service request. That's stuff over and above what my guys typically do. And I didn't put it in this report, but I will say that I, I thought this year, our full-time and our part-time helpers did a great job of keeping our parks clean and tidy throughout the season. So there's just a, a, a list of some of the small service requests that were conducted throughout the three-month period.
I have three questions if there are any.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mike. I'll start with Mr. Bush at your end of the table. Do you have any questions for Mr. Spencer? No. Mr. Packwood?
No questions at this time.
Counselor Hunter?
I don't have any questions really. I think we did a great job around the parks and stuff this year. Just have one question, maybe not a question, but an inquiry that the council should look at and brought up to me a few times there this year, about how nice the flower baskets looked in, in cars. How come they didn't have any flower baskets in Spencerville, so? As your facility operator manager, I said I what I've seen around the parks and stuff this summer, I'm pleased with the job that you're having turned out. I'm quite impressed with how it's gone a few different times, so. Being, it was being kept this summer, a few summers there, I don't worry with our employees or the garbage cans or what, but it seemed to be in a lot better, better shape. A couple of years ago, I was in there and after a weekend, there seemed to be a lot of garbage laying or laying around. And I wonder if people using it are getting better, the garbage cans there, or whether our employees are just getting in quicker and getting cleaned up, but
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, echoing Counselor Hunter's comments on flowers. Fantastic again this year. Concern with the cost of, I think it was three salinoid replacements in the, in the showers and in Cardinal totaling forty-four hundred dollars. It seems expensive for, you know, an on-off switch for, for a shower, I understand, but it just seems seems kind of crazy to me that that it costs that. Yeah, I don't really have a question, I don't think, for sure.
Mr. Mayor?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just looking at page forty-nine of sixty, I see Spencerville Bridge Flowers six seventy-six. Down hall flowers two oh five point six. So obviously there were flowers, some flowers at least in Spencerville. Hanging baskets, I, if they were twelve fifty-eight, were they all in, were they all in Cardinal? I'm, I'm not sure.
Through the, yes.
So
Through the chair, yes.
Pardon?
Yes, they were.
Okay, so I don't know if there are places here in Spencerville or not, but the only other question I had was on page forty-eight to sixty. I hate to be focused on flowers. I know there's so many other things to do, but so on page forty-eight to sixty, it's showing completion date of July the twentieth. So were we, we not get our flowers out until July the twentieth? Summer's half over.
Through the chairs, that's the billing. That's when the bill was
I was wondering.
Yeah.
That was a completion for the billing.
That's correct.
Okay, and so then I'm back then on page thirty-one sixty, which is two or two, looks like a fairly robust work activity here. And these are just the requests for services. That would be in addition to the normal work program, would it not?
Through the chair to the mayor, that is correct.
And so, fair amount of extra requests there too, Mr. Chairman, so just make note of that. Thank you very much.
And Councilor Gillis?
Oh yeah, I just got a couple, I mean, and I, I keep going on and on with this, and it's just that we, you know, three thousand dollars for salinoid valves, morts for plumbing and swish, we could give we gotta have a local plumber that's, is in our township that pays taxes. And I really, really keep stressing that, wish we could use more of our resources contracted to live in our township. That saying, you know, I know more for plumbing and heating, they have a good reputation, they give good service. Sure, there's gotta, there's gotta be somebody in our township that can do that same. And fifty of sixty. We got fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars actual cost. But it says ordered five steel park benches. Are they in there, or is that those, do the chair to, to Mike? Or is that going to be additional above the fourteen thousand, those five black steel park benches?
Through the chair to Councilor Gillis, so that's included in those prices today.
Of the fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, and now is that it done? Or are we expecting?
Oh, that'll be it.
And
no, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, I just, excuse me, I just have one for Mike, and it's regarding the showers, shower salinoids or buttons or whatever they're called. What, what actually caused that, that problem? Was that just? I, 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 I guess, was it abuse perhaps?
Through, through the chair, I know, more than anything, it's wear and tear.
Okay. So five years to a salinoid?
Seven years.
Seven years. I have nothing, I have nothing more, thank you. Okay, hearing, hearing nothing more, we're going to move on. And that brings us now to the third quarter operations report. So that's beginning on page fifty-three. So Mr. Shaw, would you highlight the report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So actually, one of public works for producing our top maintenance, twenty twenty-one hot mix projects complete. Patching is underway and spot cold action is required. We're on culvert, we had nine total culverts installed in the quarter. And additional two road crossing culverts, let's see, or one C, Robin, one at Benner Dollar Street. For signage, annual sign inspections complete, seven hundred and seventy-five signs inspected, eighty-six signs rated in fair and poor in seventy-five and due to retro reflectivity. The federal sign for commerce drives has been installed. Brushing operations, number of roads are done and the Cardinal Canal to the best ability of our equipment, that's been done. So, side. Miscellaneous, Spencerville drainage, public consultation meeting, July twenty-one. South Nation Conservation Authority approves Spencerville drainage design, and particularly the grid separator. And ECA from an ECP is now under review. Number of tenders issued, rewarded, and some tenders just Johnstown Phase One drainage public consultation meeting was held on September twenty-third, and there was a number of residents that attended as well as some council. In the quarter, we've had eighty-six service requests received and eighty-six percent complete. It was a, a, three roads remaining to complete the second pass of township. Race disposal site, there are five hundred and sixty-nine vehicles, Saturday's of quarter. Virgil's Home Hardware, Virgil Hardware Store, taking in most of the proceeds with three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one fifty. And the total was five thousand forty-eight. Two full loads of tires removed from transfer station site by Trojan Environmental. Two registered leaf burns, brush burns at the transfer site. We'll have free brush and leaf drop off of Scott Transfer Station scheduled for November. And they'll be picked up in Cardinal on November ninth in Spencerville, Johnstown, New Wexford, November tenth. On Drive Administration Agreement with JTPG, or ECA preparation is submission to East, at East of D. They have accepted the application and is currently under review. Dow Treasury and Ben attended municipal reporting under Blue Box Regulation Act now. And the REAPRA initial recycling transition report submission for Wexford Cardinal Township has been submitted. For the water and wastewater, third quarter water treatment flow summary, quarter flows through July, August, September. Ranging from five hundred seven meters cube per day down to as low as four twenty-nine. Parameters, UV transpondence. Chalked preventative pH pressure, rock chlorine and post chlorine, all well within parameters. Then compliance. Microbial, there's fifty-two samples taken, zero coliform, zero coli, and HPC from less than two to five hundred. Dust percent thirteen, zero coliform, zero coli, HPC less than two to eight. Third quarter summary report for industrial park continued. We have the first new chlorine residual refill pressure, all well within compliance. Quarter report from Mimbol Point Public Station, total flows ranging from high sixty thousand eight hundred meters cube to low of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and three over July, August, and September. Third quarter report for Spencile Lagoons. That both flows for, for the time of year, again, average daily flows ranging from one oh five to one ten for the three months. Quarter report for Cardinal wastewater treatment plant. Flow flows ranging from twenty-one thousand seven twenty-two down to low of fourteen thousand seven seventy-one. Average daily flows from seven hundred down to four ninety-two. Chem, chem and other sampling analysis. Basically all well within compliance and well, well, objectives. For the month, BOD removal for July, August, September was all ninety-five percent. Suspended solids, ninety-four percent for July and September, and ninety-six for August, and phosphorus removal was ninety-six percent for all three months. Alumina removal, July ninety-three percent, August ninety-nine percent, and September ninety-three percent.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any questions or concerns? I'll start with Mr. Lester Bush?
No.
Mr. Packwood?
No problems.
And Counselor Hunter?
I just a inquiry for the third quarter report for flow and garden for wastewater. How come there seems to be such a vast difference, like twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two in July and then down to September, we're down to fourteen seven seventy-one?
I think a lot of it to do is with extraneous flows. So typically, in, in rainier weather, earlier in, in earlier months, in later months of August, September, we had heavy rain, so that's the typical kind of pattern that follows.
So we're getting a lot still of surface water coming in.
Through the chair, it can be also that extraneous flows of groundwater. If we have clay pipes and so forth, there's quite a bit Cardinal. Some of them are pretty rough shape with cracks and and all the seams tend to split on, on clay pipes. So you get calcification, you can see it in the videos, we have a video where the calcification forming in the water, in some cases running into the, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
So going back to that same question, the counselor, thank you, Mr. Chair. The question that Counselor Hunter raised, so that's infiltration into the system, what we're seeing in July.
According to this, I would guess.
I, I remember at one point, we did ask, does staff have a suggestion for us as to a program came along that provided us with money to address infiltration? Whether staff would have a, a, a section or a location or a, a string of clay pipe that they would recommend for treatment. And I remember that that question was asked, I don't ever recall seeing a seeing an answer to it, but, I mean, this clearly tells me, from what I'm seeing here, that what month, by July, we are seeing into continued infiltration. So I just leave that as a hanging chat, but I wanted to go back to page fifty-three of sixty. And the brushing, section one point four, brushing operations completed, Cardinal Canal, South Bank. I noticed that you qualified your answer there, and you said, it's done to the best of our, our equipment, but there's other equipment available, and I believe that one of the pieces of equipment that's available is available through a company in Brockville that has a piece of equipment that's capable of doing side heels on quite a, on quite a, a serious slope. The part that we did with our equipment looks very good, but it's only about two-thirds finished. And I'm just wondering, did we ever look into obtaining that other piece of equipment to complete that job? Through the chair, if I may.
Certainly through the, through the chair, we did follow up with that particular company. I believe that they may have been on, on site, hooked at the at the elevation and indicated that that machine would not accomplish that task.
Okay, so previously, we did it, I think, through a, not through a contractor that worked straight up the slope and swayed straight back down, rather than going side slope. Was that, was that option looked into this time?
So through, through the chair, the previous contractor that had done the work had very similar to attachment that is, is on the, the current active expeditions. And I, I, I would say that the same approach was taken a, a, as previously done.
I'm not I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not catching the answer here.
So with the previous contractor, they did as much as they could reach from the top, and then there is a a flat area on the bottom, and they would reach up as, as, as high as they could from that bottom part to, to, to the top. I'm, I'm not sure i- if the unit was able to reach the, the, the entire bank from top to bottom.
Yeah, but us doing it from the side, did, did, I thought, we did this several years ago, I think it was about three. But the, in a matter of fact, I watched him. He went from the bottom to the top and then back down again.
Through, through the chair, I'm not aware of that activity. I would be concerned if that took place. If we're talking, if, if, if we're talking the same area.
Because we did it right from the, right from the stairway. Right from the stairway.
East.
East to, this time, there's about, we're only, we went from the east to the west, we're only about two-thirds along. So there's quite a section there that didn't get done.
We can certainly follow up to see if, 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 if that additional section can, can be done.
Okay, just, I'm just curious, because I, I know that I well, mind you, it's amazing how your mind slips, but I was quite, quite confident that when we did it the previous time, and again, three or four years ago, that it was done completely, but I could be wrong. So the, I'll go to the next question, which is on page fifty-three of sixty, same place again. And so at one point five, when we're talking about miscellaneous last bullet point there, well, it's not a bullet point, but the last sentence, roadside mowing, three roads remaining to complete the second pass of all township roads. I thought in previous years, we were getting up to three passes on the roadside mowings. And here, at this year, it appears we haven't actually completed the second pass. What has been the difference this year that would that's, that this roadside mowing is kind of behind, through the chair, if I may?
Through, through the chair, as far as I know, that we've only done the two passes. They've been fairly busy with, with the dryer weather, about almost every day this year, just to, to get up to where they are now. The couple of roads that are left, under my understanding, are shorter roads, like Tolan Ranch and so forth. So they basically did the whole township, the two passes and save a, a couple of short Passes and save a, a couple of shorter roads at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Dillabon?
Oh yeah, I just have a couple of page fifty three to sixty culverts, two custom entrance culverts. I just, just in my own record, what is that do the chair to, to the operation?
Through the chair, basically it's a typical culvert to nine meters long. And there's a certain amount, we charge eight hundred dollars to put in an entrance culvert. Some people request larger culverts and deeper ditches, so they're provided an estimate. And we consider that kind of a custom job since it's not the standard eight hundred dollar fee for, for them.
But it's the same, like it's for residential homes.
It can be, or it's typically it's for farmer steel saw where they need a wider.
Yeah, I understand. And question number two is on page fifty four sixty. Boys, our, our dump is good, Carrot Manfield is quite busy, forty four vehicles a day. And we're only open on Saturday and if you divide the thirteen Saturdays by sixty nine, it's at forty four, so. I'm quite surprised at. For what we can take, how busy we are. That's all for me.
Hey, thank you. And I, I just have actually one and that's on page fifty four regarding the free brush. And leaf drop off at Scott Road for November, that is the entire month of November. I, I knew the answer to that, I just, thank you, just wanted to confirm it. Okay, any other questions or concerns? During that, I'm going to move on then, and that brings us to the regional fire services update report. And Chief Moore, would you be good enough to give us something?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is a follow up from the council meeting on April. Where I was directed to explore opportunities within Leeds and Granville in the areas of fire prevention, education, joint procurement, training certification and standardization. Since that time, the fire chiefs, fire chiefs have formed an association. And I thought it would be interesting just to provide you with the direction that the chiefs are going. So our objective is the advancement of fire protection, mutual aid and emergency services in the county of Leeds and Granville. To allow for the greater protection of life property and the environment through administrative and operational efficiency. And then specifically item C, assistant developing fire prevention programs for the fire departments within the county. And item G, identify cost savings through chiefs. Identify cost savings through strategic planning countywide. Specifically under the areas requested fire prevention education, the committee has been there for many years. We work together and allows for consistent messaging throughout the counties and prevents duplication of effort by every fire service. Joint procurement, we recognize that coordinated purchases can reduce costs and support standardization. We recently solicited pricing for structural firefighting gear. Although a large purchase did not take place, savings were achieved due to the added competition for a larger market. A couple of the barriers we found for the joint procurement was. The purchase timing and the difference between capital budgets and operational budgets at different municipalities, looking at different, different purchasing methods. Training and certification, a similar story, our Leeds Thousand Hours Training Center is our regional. Our regional fire college. They're developing a pool of instructors to serve the area, as was indicated in my report earlier. This will allow greater access to qualified instructors, reduce travel costs typically associated with bringing instructors directly from the college. And standardization, we recognize the importance of standardization for both operational and financial efficiency. We feel that improved standardization should be realized by group purchasing and the standardization of training initiatives. Currently, we're working on a standardized firefighter accountability system to be rolled out across the county. And the bottom line is it's going to take time for these programs to mature for the benefit of everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Moore. I'll now open the up to, to questions and I'll start with Counselor Dillabon.
Uh, nope, nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So through you to the chief. So first of all, I want to say how pleased I am to see the way the chiefs have pulled together as a result of that countywide report. We all know and all feel that that report. Could have taken us in a different direction completely. But the fact that the associate, that the, that the chiefs have pulled together through the formalization of this report. Of this association with these objectives is, I think is a major step forward. And I, I hope that at the next meeting, you'll take my thanks back to them. I know other mayors feel the same way. One of the things that I specifically wanted to ask you about as a result of this report. Was, and I'm just trying to figure out which one of these objectives was, but it's the one about. Getting the mutual aid agreements in place between the different townships. I'm trying to just think where it is.
Through the chair would be item H, ensure all departments are following the mutual aid plan.
That's the one, yes, go on the next page, yep, that's the one. So my question is this. At our end of the county, we seem to have recently updated all of our mutual aid plans, if I recall correctly. I'd say within the last year since you've become chief. Are other neighboring townships at the same stage that we're at? Or are we slightly ahead? I get the impression we might be slightly ahead of the others. Am I right or wrong in that?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm not, I don't know specifically, but from the talk around the table, I believe we are. We are ahead of some of the other areas as far as working with our neighbors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So again, I recognize that and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, thank you. And through the chair to Chief Moore. My compliments to you and the other chiefs for not letting this. Sit on the shelf and finding some ways to constructively. Move things forward and I guess time will tell how well, how well things do move forward. So looking forward to, to that happen. Thank you.
Counselor Hunter?
After you, Chief Moore, glad to see that. We're working on this, as it appears to me, there's a lot of. Things we're working on, the chiefs are working on, the things that were brought forward in the county plan. I don't really know. However, there's going to be a consensus through the chiefs and, and the township to know that we're ever going to reach the stage where the county plan would have. Maybe taken us in getting coordination between all the equipment being interchangeable and being able to get the cost savings. I. Think there's still a bit of. Holdback in the various townships of. Upgrading and changing to. Try and get on the same level of everybody working with the same type of equipment and the same. Thing and I. I'm interested to see how it goes forward, how, how the townships can work together that we're not. Constantly trying to have five or six fire trucks in every, every station instead of having an automatic dispatch from. Neighboring station. Mutual age rate, rate, we don't get, we still have a. To my opinion, we have a lot of vehicles sitting sometime timing a real close neighbor, neighbor like Prescott or investor that. Could be automatically dispatched rather than having quite as many trucks sitting in every township, so. That's, that's got to be worked on.
Thank you, Mr. Packman?
Through the chair to the chief, I think it's excellent that all the chiefs are sitting down talking. And discussing issues and even if something doesn't come concrete out of all of it. At least they're sitting there talking about issues and that's the most important part of it all. Thank you.
And Mr. Bush?
Uh, the same again. Good job and keep it up. Hopefully we can continue to collaborate.
Good, good job, Chief Moore, thank you. All right, we're going to move on and this brings us to a, our last information item, which is the walking track follow up. And as you recall, this was brought up at a previous, previous meeting for the facilities manager to put into place and monitor. And I believe that report is, is pretty self explanatory, but Mr. Spencer, if you'll highlight a few things for us?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the committee is aware of our last meeting, there was a discussion. About opening up the walking track, so we have done that for the last month and as reported here. Really not a, a whole lot of serious issues, just a couple. Um, the, the biggest thing is that each morning the walking track is clean for the, the seniors that use it. And I, I think that was, if any of the complaints were going to come from anywhere, it would be from that group of seniors that walk in the morning. So I think we've been able to. Defect any of that issue. Staff do monitor it a little bit more and, and it also helps right now that the only area that the, the kids are supposed to be in are the bleachers. And then all that would be running around, so that, that's helped a little bit. And then secondly, just at the bottom of the report, I just thought I'd give just a quick update. On October the eighth, which was the Friday long weekend as they always normally do, the province committed with easing some of the restrictions again, so. We put that into place quickly late Friday night and it had that in place for a Saturday of the long weekend. Really no issue, as I indicated earlier, when Deputy Mayor had asked some questions. We are open to full capacity in the spectator areas. And now we are allowing them in thirty minutes prior to, the parents can come in at any time now, so if there's a game on prior. The parents can come in and watch that game, they don't have to wait for their kids. But we're still allowing the thirty minute time span for the kids to go into the room. Because we still have to wait and defog those change rooms after each rental, so that's the reason for that, so. But other than that, I feel that the, the front staff and the COVID staff have done an excellent job of doing the screening that gives everybody.
Thank you. I'll open it up now to the Counselor Dillabon's end of the table.
Thank you, dear chair, to Mr. Spencer. So in all, in all, in all, we can let everybody go up there. We're coming to the conclusion, there isn't a big issue here.
Through the chair, the Counselor Dillabon, I would agree with that.
Thank you very much. Glad we can move on.
And Mr. Mayor?
The, the question of, of the change rooms between the teams, what was the reason for that again?
Through the chair to the, to the mayor, after each rental, our COVID staff go in with the defodder and sanitize the change rooms.
Okay, so through the chair again, but. Is this stuff, is the health unit still recommending that? Because I was under the impression from Dr. Stewart that that's no longer a recommendation. Based on the recent science.
Through the chair to the mayor, yes, qualifications is. That it is required.
Recently confirmed?
I would say within the last three to four weeks, the last time, one of the last conversations I had with Kim McCann. He was aware of what we were doing.
Aware, yes. They'll, they'll never tell you that. They'll never tell you not to do it. But if you ask them, do we have to do it? It's a different question.
Through the chair to the mayor. Even if we weren't defogging the change room, which literally takes about thirty seconds to, to a minute to do. It wouldn't change the time span, bring the kids in because the rooms still have to be cleaned up. So that wouldn't change. So the only thing that we're doing is taking an extra minute and defogging the change rooms.
Okay, so that, so the COVID is not the reason for the delay?
No.
Oh, well, okay, that's a different kind of a twist to the presentation. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just thanks, Mike, for the, for the get, like keeping. Good account of, of how the track's being used and, and, and the complaints and I think, you know, Counselor Hunter did a good job bringing it. Forward and I'm happy to see it's being used.
Counselor Hunter?
I'm glad, please, with the way things are going and as far as the teams coming in thirty minutes ahead of time. I think there's a lot of parents quite glad that it is a thirty minute restriction because I, I know as a parent myself for hockey for, for years, I, I thought this. Coach question, players to be there at minimum of an hour ahead of a game was just a little ridiculous, so. They can't get rest in thirty minutes and the coach tell them what they're not to do, do with that time, I think. The kids are just basically before, they're just goofing around for a half, half an hour in there and I think that's for. In the Spenceful Arena especially, I think that's where we ran, ran into the crowded and stuff in the dressing rooms and stuff all the time because people coming in, we had. Team from, out of the town, township, I don't think we ever really had too much trouble with the township teams. Because they had the, the high level teams that were coming in, in the lot of one. In different areas that were coming in and thinking they should just walk into a dressing room and a lot of the times it was more than an hour ahead of time. They were coming an hour and twenty minutes ahead of time thinking they should have a dressing room and I think that's correct. Now when they know they can't come. Get in the dressing room, I think that's, I would assume that's cleared up a lot of troubles for the staff and, or signing rooms and stuff. Come go sit on the benches, bleachers and watch the game if you want, but you're not bringing your equipment in until thirty minutes before and so.
That's correct.
I appreciate that part of it, so.
Mr. Packman?
Through the chair, Mr. Spencer, I think you and the staff are doing a wonderful job of looking after the arenas.
And Mr. Bush? Okay, and just to, just to, I'm, I'm really, really glad, Mike, that the walking track and the viewing area there is working out well. I've, 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 I've been told I'm too young to use the walking track as yet. But I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that you're on top of it all. Thank you so much.
We would certainly give you a lesson if you wanted to come over, Counselor Cameron.
Thank, thank you, thank you. I just may take you up on that. Now, that, that, that concludes the action information items. And I think perhaps this may be a first, we had no recommendations whatsoever tonight. So that brings us now to council inquiries and motions of motion. Do we have any? Hearing none? Thank you. And that brings us now to number nine, which is the mayor's report and the floor is yours, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So later this week, probably even tomorrow. Mr. Graham will be notifying members of council that the mayor's been asked to call a special meeting of council for Wednesday. The, the C O will indicate the time of that meeting. I think, I might just well say it, I think we pretty much agreed at five o'clock on Wednesday special council meeting. I'm not going to indicate the purpose of the meeting, that will come from the C O.
That's this, that's, that will be.
Yeah, prior to the board meeting.
Prior to the board meeting, thank you, okay.
Uh, the next thing I wanted to talk about just briefly is this is now the aggregate resources master plan. For the United Counties of Leeds and Granville and this is draft six now. And I've got to admit that I have not had a chance to read it. I hope other members of council will take an opportunity to read it because. This draft plan has been now circulated and the county planning department will receive comment until I think it's October the twenty second. After October the twenty second, if nobody's raising any issues with regard to this, this is going to come to United, United Counties Council. It'll probably come to county council in the November meeting for approval. And I, I'm going to tell you and I don't make any bones about it, I'm. And I I'm going to tell you, and I don't make any bones about it, I'm a little bit worried, even though I haven't read it. I'm a little bit worried of some what some of the implications could be. Because I I just again point out to you that. By setting aside everything that's deemed debris, an aggregate or an aggregate resource. Or by somehow defining it and by somehow mapping it. We are restricting where and how development can occur within the township. Just remind you that Giant Tiger, and I and I said this to Mister Grant today. Before we met with Giant Tiger, we had several meetings with Kirkshank Construction. Because they knew that the rock was there on surface and they wanted to know whether we would sell them that land. They had just. Changed over the lease at the Federally quarry that Kirkshank had run for many, many years. That lease had just gone to Pundrel Brook Ravel and Kirkshank was interested in establishing a new quarry on that site. And they met with us to see whether we would be interested in that. And we didn't commit, but we said, do your studies of the rock. And if the rock is of suitable type. Then come back to us, well, as they did their studies, they determined that the rock was not of. Sufficient hardness for them to open a hard rock quarry. And so that deal sort of fell apart and a few months later, along came Giant Tiger. And what was good for Giant Tiger was that the bedrock was right on the surface, but it was capable of being worked with a rammer. Rather than all, every, everything having to be dynamite. Which was a big savings in the Giant Tiger development. So I'm saying all this because this aggregate resources master plan. Has big implications for our township, I hope that you'll take a minute to read it. And and some time to read it and and raise any issues with me. So that we can get them to the planner before that deadline passes. And the last thing on my report, I just want to talk brief briefly, you know that I met on Thursday. With an individual from Minister Municipal Affairs. As a result, that meeting came about as a result of our meeting with Newmar the previous Thursday before that. So I did say to Mister Grant, maybe we should have a a a. An in-camera session tonight, but we decided to hold that in-camera session on Monday night because there are two meetings taking place this week. We'll bring everybody up to date on Monday night after we know the result of these two meetings that are taking place this week. So that's my report, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to question period and I see by remote, we have no one. And we have no one in the gallery for questions, so we'll just move on. And there is no closed session tonight, it's just. Ordered by the mayor and now I'm looking for a German. I have a mover with Mister Packwood, do I have a second? And Deputy Mayor, thank you, and it is, let me just check the atomic clock. All all in favor of a German at eight twenty-three?